Next item is the approval of the minutes.
I move that we approve this special meeting, which I think we can probably do as a joint one.
You can do both at the same time.
And the regular meeting for the Camrio.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been first and second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any noes, abstentions, motion? Thank you for the special meeting. Alright, then. Thank you very much. That's recorded.
So, what I believe is they should actually vote separately because there's two.
Oh, okay. My apologies. Thank you for that clarification. Let's revote then. First of all, will be the special meeting for the Oxnard and the Camrio. And that will be, if I can get a motion for that. Thank you. It's been first and second. Aye?
Nine opposed, or?
Motion been approved. Great. Okay, now for the February 14th, the Camrio meeting. Could I get a?
Okay, I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
It's been first and second. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? The Camrio meeting has been approved. Thank you very much. Next item is the public comment. We have four speaker cards. Is there any other speaker cards? Nope. Okay. First one is David Lunn. You'll have three minutes.
My name is David Lunn. I do not own a hangar at Camrio, but I have a county hangar. I was on the county hangar waiting list for nine years. When I was president of the EA chapter in 2015, I was in support of the EAA CAF sublease, which was a commercial lease based upon the county and the CAF providing a long-term solution to EAA's hangar. This was a commercial lease. This has reversion. I've been a casual observer in this whole process for the last four months, going to meetings, people talking about how the leases needed to be revised. And I'm really asking, what's the end game? Does the county really want to take all these hangars? Are they wanting to take them in anticipation of the 2028 closure of Santa Monica Airport, where we're going to have a flood of jets coming in here? And they're going to make a lot more money from taxes and high-paying tenants. The people who originally invested in Camrio and Oxnard are the stakeholders of the airport. And if you look at the big picture, those stakeholders are the ones who put on the airshow, who are community supporters, who do Young Eagles, who get the next generation of pilots to get excited about flying. They're a key component in both airports. To me, the whole manufacturing of a lease crisis is very disingenuous. Basically, you're like, oh, the FAA needs this, they need that. I think it was totally done under false premises. And then coming up with mathematical models that are based upon an investment going down instead of up makes no sense. All this has really done is completely decimated the values of the hangars to the people that own them, who were planning on using those as part of their retirement. This is just very disingenuous and very dishonest. And I also feel that the attempt to modify the bylaws to take away public comment for changes in the airport is also very dangerous. You create a czar-type mentality of, we're going to do this because we're going to get all this revenue in 2028, and hell with all you stakeholders that originally were the founding people of these airports. I got my license in 1985. There wasn't even a control tower at Camrio. But I waited to get a lease for a hangar, and now I could be kicked out in a moment's notice. It's just basically wrong on so many levels. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Scott Barra.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Scott Barra. I'm the new president of the Camrio, Oxnard Hangar Owners and Tenants Association. I'm here tonight to ask that this body not take any action on anything pending until the new director is in place. Much like the United States Senate held off on filling a Supreme Court seat pending the election of a new president, with Mr. Turner being in place in about three weeks, it's only fair to him that he have a say in what goes on at the airports he's going to manage. And what staff has put forth today for you to consider may not be something that he agrees with. So in all fairness to him, I'd ask that anything that's on the agenda today, that would be voted on and possibly committed to, be delayed until the next, at least the next meeting, so Mr. Turner has an opportunity to weigh in on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mary Sullivan? Or Mark Sullivan? Apologize. Sorry. Maybe I need glasses.
I'm Mark Sullivan. I submitted a package of documents. I put in speaker cards on both 5A and 5C. I don't want to be, I'm not trying to grab some time here, but I want to point out to the authority that it's not abundantly, or at first blush apparent, but there's a real interlinked issue here between the bylaws and between, the revision of the bylaws, between the revision of the hangars and, let's see, I've lost track of my train of thought here. With the bylaw, with the change in the bylaws, with the revision in the hangar agreements, and with the presentation you're going to get tonight from the county council on the Fair Political Practices Act. I've submitted cards on both of them. The point is, you're going to be hearing from, I think, one or two more speakers. People are really concerned about losing this authority as an interface between the public at large and the Board of Supervisors. And when I speak on my card on that point, I want to point out that there's language in the proposed bylaws that we think are hidden, you know, actually hidden surrenders on your part of significant parts of the airport authorities', you know, current jurisdiction. And for the life of us, we don't know why you'd want to give that up. And as citizens, we really don't want you to give that up. Because if you restrict yourself just to being able to talk on matters that are within the joint jurisdiction of the city of Camrio and the county, that's not very many issues that are important to us. All the ones that are important to us are beyond that. I'll save my time for that, but I wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Thank you for your comments. And Harvey.
Good evening. My name is Harvey Paskowitz. I'm a member of the Aviation Advisory Commission. And I just wanted to bring you a short minutes of our last meeting. The first thing we did is county council gave us a Brown Act review, which was very good. And I think that periodically, perhaps annually, we ought to get a reminder of the things we're obligated to know about that. The other issue that we discussed at some length was that some of our members thought that we should review our bylaws, as I know that you folks have done a similar thing. So we appointed three members of our group to review the bylaws. We're going to meet in a week. We'll probably have several meetings. And at some point, we'll be able to let this group know what we think our bylaws should say if there are some changes. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the update. Okay, any more speaker cards, public comments? Alright, moving on to new business. First one is the training on the bylaws. Brown Act, Fair Political Reform Act, and Roberts Rule of Order. First of all, I'd love to welcome Mr. Leroy Smith from our county council, who is here today to give us this training. I really appreciate, I asked for this with all the discussions we had from the last meeting, to ensure that, and along with supervisors, there goes it, to make sure that we are all trained and that the public also knows the rules as well. So with that, I will pass that over to Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. I'm happy to be here and to the other members of the authorities. I'm glad to be here and help as much as I can. Is it closer? Okay. It's very, I just want to say I gave two of these three trainings to the advisory commission. So some in the audience are going to be watching the same PowerPoint slides. Just as an introduction, I'm Leroy Smith. I'm the county council. Tom Temple works in our office. He will be here later. He's more up to speed on the bylaws and some of the other issues in front of you today. So I'll defer to him on those issues. This is both introductory, so some of you may already know it. It may be too simple for you. And it's a real challenge to be interesting when your three topics are the Brown Act, the Fair Political Reform Act, and Roberts Rules of Order. So I'll try to be a little interesting and informative. And I'm not sure what order. The PowerPoints are, I was just going to go, yeah, to the Brown Act. Okay. And so this, I like this slide. I give this presentation to a lot of districts in smaller groups. But I always just thought it was interesting to learn that the Brown Act's named after Ralph Brown. And not only is it not Jerry Brown, but it's also interesting that, you know, Brown's opaque, but it's supposed to be transparency. So it's just, there's some ironies there. But anyway, it goes back to the early 60s, I think. And the whole idea is to have open government and that decisions are made in the open with public participation. Unlike Congress, for example, they can do a lot of things behind closed doors. But, so the, if you know some of the basic rules, I think you can comply with the Brown Act almost by accident if you just know what the basic principles are. Then there's some highly technical issues that you just have to defer to staff to read the details and get into the specifics if it comes up. But the basic premise is all the government's business is done in an open meeting with disclosure to the public and public participation. So the, now the Brown Act only applies to local agencies. There is a different set of laws that deal with state agencies in the state. But so for cities, counties, districts, and as we'll get into bodies like this, at the local level, it does apply. But the basic rule is that all meetings, and I apologize for some of this. I'm just going to read from the PowerPoint slide, but this is part of the Brown Act. So all meetings of the legislative body of a local agency shall be open and public. All persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting except as otherwise provided. So for me, the keys to understanding the act are, what is a meeting and what is a legislative body? So, okay. First of all, the definitions in the Brown Act are that the legislative body is the governing body. So it's not, sometimes the word legislature throws people off. It's not the assembly in the senate, you know, it could be a board of trustees, but board of directors, different names, commissioners. But it's the governing body of the entity. That's the legislative body. But it also includes subsidiary bodies of the governing board. So pretty much you know, like the Board of Supervisors, city councils, for example, are governing bodies. But it applies also to subsidiary bodies of those agencies. So what is a subsidiary body? Any body created by charter, ordinance, resolution, or other formal action of the legislative body. So, you know, sometimes, for example, if your executive officer or CEO, for example, goes out, school superintendent forms a committee of parents to advise on an issue, that's not a subsidiary body because the legislative body didn't create it. It was just an executive officer created maybe a stakeholders group or some other body to advise. And you're covered, this subsidiary body, so for, you know, I would just say the authority and the advisory commission are subsidiary bodies. They're created by the parent bodies, which is the city council and/or Board of Supervisors. And you are covered regardless of whether it's temporary or permanent advisory or decision-making. This has kind of changed over the years, but it's clear, it, you know, pretty much covers everything.
So Leroy, the authority is a subsidiary body?
Right.
This authority, okay.
And, you know, it's jointly of the city council and the Board of Supervisors. And it doesn't matter that it's only advisory. It doesn't matter that it's ad hoc, temporary, standing. It's just, all of those things are irrelevant. It's a body. Now, there's one exception that sometimes leads people to think there are a lot of exceptions. But the major exception is an advisory committee comprised solely of less than a quorum of the legislative body that created it and is not a standing committee. So you can have a minority of your body, so save two members of the authority, let's say. You can appoint them to act as an advisory committee or to go examine a single issue and report back. And that would not be a Brown Act body. So less than a quorum. Let's say just to go study, for example, the commission here has appointed three to look into the bylaws and to communicate with the authorities. So that's less than a quorum. It's not a standing committee because it's for one issue only. And it's got a limited scope of authority and subject matter. So that would not be a Brown Act body. That's because less than a quorum, not a standing committee. Just for reference, here's a definition of a standing committee. Committee with a continuing jurisdiction over a matter or has a fixed meeting schedule. So even if you were less than a quorum, but you were a standing committee, you would be covered by the Brown Act. But these kind of one-off, ad hoc committee, one issue, less than a quorum, that would not be covered. That's pretty much a legislative body. So now, the other major issue is what is a meeting? So any meeting of that legislative body has to comply with a lot of transparency rules. Well, how do you determine what a meeting is? So a meeting is a congregation of a majority of the members at the same time and place to hear, discuss, or deliberate on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the body. So it's pretty complete. There's a lot of interesting history as to how this came to be worded as it is. Like a lot of things, there are loopholes that are plugged. People look for other ways around it. You know, at one time, I'll just say the statute and the case law basically limited meetings to actions, where a legislative act was agreed on or taken. And that was changed to be more, to be broader, to encompass much more. And importantly, just to hear information about a subject matter that's within your jurisdiction is a meeting. So if you go to a conference, three of you, and you go and you just listen, technically, that's a meeting. Now, there may be some exceptions that would allow you to do that without the other Brown Act compliance issues. The point is, it's not only collective decision-making, it's collective receipt of information, discussion, et cetera. Going to dinner, it's a meeting. Now, if you discuss county business. So, excuse me here, let me catch up. So a meeting is very broadly defined. And just going through this is a history of people trying to get around the law. It's like my fantasy football league. Every year, somebody gets around a rule, and then you've got to have an amendment and plug it. So, okay, so the way to get around this that's been tried is, well, we won't meet in the same place. You know, I just showed you the definition is meeting in the same place and time. So they say, well, we won't meet in the same place. I'll call in, for example. Or majority won't meet. So two will meet, and then we'll pass it on. Or we won't meet at all in any real sense. We'll just communicate through email, one-on-one. And the legislature plugged these loopholes with this. A majority of members shall not, outside of a meeting, use a series of communications of any kind, directly or through intermediaries, to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business within the subject matter of the jurisdiction. So this statute was meant to plug all of those loopholes where people tried to get around the meeting requirements. And just, this has become, you've heard it if you're in public office terms to try to describe these things, the daisy chains, which is just to pass it on, and the hub and spoke, which is kind of one person is the central person passing on, receiving communications. So these things are not allowed. These are violations of the Brown Act. So that is an overview of, I think, the two most important aspects of Brown Act meetings, which is what bodies are covered and what is a meeting. Now, this is just a list of other major issues that you could have a presentation on about the length of the one I just did. A lot of these are highly technical. You can, you know, read them and follow them. If you have the statute in front of you, they're pretty easy to follow. They're just not so easy to memorize. But each meeting has to have a written agenda. For regular meetings, it has to be 72 hours, posted 72 hours in advance. If it's a special meeting, it can be 24 hours. And there's some, you can have even emergency meetings on one hour's notice. But the basic point is you've got to have a written agenda. It must fairly describe, I mean, a common sense application. It must fairly describe the action or subject matter that you're going to address at the meeting. So the public who reads it and is interested in weighing in on it will know enough to go to the meeting. So it's really common sense. The statute says the description need not be longer than 20 words. But many descriptions end up being much longer just because you want to ensure that there's full notification. There's a provision for closed sessions dealing with confidential matters. There's a requirement that you allow public comment. I know it's come up, like what is the extent of the public comment that you must allow in a special meeting versus a regular meeting? I just emphasize the Brown Act sets minimal requirements. You can always give more transparency. You can always allow more comment than the Brown Act requires. What the Brown Act says is for regular meetings, you must allow public comment on any matter within your jurisdiction, and you must allow comment on the individual items on the agenda at or before the time that you consider that agenda item. Now, regular meetings, which are on 24 hours' notice, you only have to allow public comment on the items that are listed on the agenda. So you do not have to allow general public comment, but you may. And I would say most entities do that I'm familiar with. And that, and I emphasize, that's just minimal requirements in the Brown Act. For example, you would also need to look at your bylaws, which deal with public comment. So Brown Act certainly doesn't preclude you from allowing public comment at any time or anywhere. But the minimal requirements are full public comment on any issue within jurisdiction at a regular meeting and public comment on the items agendized at a special meeting. Board comment is allowed, even matters not on the agenda. The board can ask staff for, you know, the terminology is a brief request to staff to report back on something or on an issue that is raised, let's say, in public comment. It's just a brief report or question. You can't get in a dialogue, is the main thing. And there's a general exception that allows, even though it's not agendized, you can communicate about scheduling future meetings or future actions. Future meeting or a future item on an agenda. And that's allowed because there'd be a conundrum if you couldn't talk about putting things, you could never even agree to meet. So that's always allowed. And sometimes you'll see the direct staff to bring something back, report back. And that's allowed even though it's not agendized. Then there's public records and enforcement issues. But, so that's the basic introductory training that I give on Brown Act issues. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, or I'll move on.
That's good.
Yes, two areas, please. Can you please clean up the closed session item? What can go into closed session, and how do you handle potential litigation? The second one is public comment. When do you restrict the public from making their slip to make a public comment? Is it at the very beginning of the meeting? Or is it while the information is still being discussed, they can turn in a speaker card, please?
So there's a list of items that qualify for closed session. There are many that have never come up at all. I mean, they're like, if you're reviewing a state audit, maybe, or something. The major ones are litigation. So if you are initiating litigation, you've been threatened with being sued. Or there's pending litigation. The key to all those is you have to have an attorney in the room. The whole purpose is that you need to talk to your attorney. So sometimes people think they can have a litigation closed session and no attorney in the room. We just want to talk about the case. The whole premise is you need to talk to your attorney or listen to your attorney. So litigation's the major one. There are closed sessions for personnel items, for collective bargaining strategy, which applies even to nonrepresented groups, which sometimes, that's a recent add-on that doesn't make sense. But the whole, so you need to strategize for union bargaining or disciplinary matters, individual employee issues. Could be hiring, could be discipline, could be performance evaluation. There are exceptions for lease negotiations. Real estate lease negotiations where you need to give direction to your negotiators. Obviously, you don't want to, you've got to, you know, I think for obvious reasons, you have a strategic number you're trying to get to, and you're giving guidance to your negotiators. Probably those are the three major ones. You do have to, there are safe harbor notifications for how you put that on the agenda. And then there are requirements that you report out, actions taken. There are many exceptions, and in practice, there are not, there are fewer times that you announce something than you don't because you only announce final actions. And a lot of times, what you've decided is an interim action or some strategy or some authority, please go, you know, we'll authorize this amount to settle, for example. Go see if you can negotiate it. So you don't have to disclose that. But if you have a final agreement, you have to announce that coming out. Or put it in writing. It can be posted. So, you know, those are the closed sessions. Some are highly technical, and you need to really read them and be advised, especially on the personnel ones. Because there are issues where you must give the employee the right to have the item heard in open session, for example. If you're hearing charges against an employee, you've got to give them notice, and they have a right to demand that it be held in open session. So if you're dealing ever with that, I'd be careful and work with counsel. On the public comment, I'll just tell you war stories, you know. I mean, I've worked at the county for almost 30 years. I thought everybody did it the way we did it. When I got more experience with how the other 57 counties do it, everyone does it differently. Some people have public comment at the end of the meeting, some have it at the beginning, some in the middle, some sideways. The public comment can be anytime. The comment on the items on the agenda specifically have to be allowed before or at the time they're considered. So you can treat the general public comment differently than the comment on the agendized items. Now, time-wise, how you control, you know, three minutes, two minutes. You're allowed to exercise reasonable control over the amount and the order of public comment. The one thing I, it interests me, and I point out, you're not allowed to demand anybody give their name or where they live. demand anybody give their name, or where they live, or anything like that. It's very typical, well, fill out a card. Well, it's got their name, their street address. Now, usually people fill it out. But you're entitled to come in and be anonymous, and just raise your hand, and I want to address the body. So you can't put any preconditions on, on the speakers. That's probably the general rules on, on public comment.
I, maybe it's for Rubio or for Leroy, but I think I heard a comment earlier that they were suppressing public comment here in the authority, and it's not in the bylaws. But I, I don't think so, because I think we, anybody wants to speak on items on the agenda, they can speak. Anybody that wants to speak on any specific item, they have the right to do so. And I think it's up to the chair to say, three minutes, four minutes, five minutes, one minute, and so forth. Is that correct? I don't think we're barring anybody from public comments here in the airport authority at all. I think it's, I want people to, personally, to, to share whatever their concerns are, because I think are extremely important.
No, absolutely. I think that's correct. And, you know, and I think the best practice is, if somebody's, the only real rule is, it's got to be something within the jurisdiction of the body. So somebody comes in and starts talking about the, you know, Afghanistan War. But I think, still the better practice is, let them have their two minutes, because, you know, it's hard to define where the issue relates, or where it stops and begins. And, but other than, than that, you know, you can control, if there's 5,000 people, you can control how, you know, how they speak. But that never comes up, really.
And Madam Chair, you know, this authority's advisory to the Board of Supervisors.
Right.
So we would just recommend to the Board of Supervisors.
That's true.
And the ultimate decision is up to the Board of Supervisors.
That's true, correct.
I just want to show that.
Correct. And on another clarification, on the public comments in the bylaws that we were talking, there is an item that says it's going to be for airport items. And I think there was a question on if we have to limit it to only airport items that are public comments, or can it be public comments on "The sky is blue and the grass is green, and I wanted to come and talk to you"? So could you clarify that, maybe?
I will, with, with the deferral on one point. I'm not as conversant in the bylaws and how it describes the jurisdiction as Tom would be, or Jorge. But the issue is, if it's within that, the scope of advising airport matters, you should allow it.
Okay.
And I don't know if it's more crib than that, that only, only airworthiness matters versus other things.
Okay. And we'll review that later. But, and then the other question is, you spoke about giving public comment on agenda items. And so that does include the director's report and monthly reports. So people can turn in cards based on item number seven or eight, if you saw the agenda today, and, and report on that.
Yes.
Okay. So it's, public comment isn't closed for any specific item?
No.
Okay.
Even a closed session item? Somebody can comment on the closed session item. They don't even exactly know what they're commenting on.
Okay.
But, but they can.
That's good. I just really appreciate the clarification on that. Are there any further questions on the Brown Act part?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a clarification on one statement you made, but I'd also like to bring to your attention, the issue about public comment had to do with a special meeting. Our City of Oxnard, special meetings, you cannot talk about anything other than items on specifically special meeting. It's not for general comment. They have a public comment period at the beginning of the meeting, but it's not for general comment. The GMA, reading the bylaws on the public comment, they can talk about anything. So different bodies have different readings for special meetings. What is the policy throughout the county on that, special meetings? Are there restrictions about what can be addressed?
No, we have a public comment session.
Okay. The second thing is, you mentioned, coming out of closed session, final agreements. How do you, you mentioned that it would be published. I am curious how you handle.
We announce them verbally.
Okay. If you have a final agreement, and you have an offer from a party, and you take a vote from the body to accept the offer, you don't have anything in writing. So there's nothing announced. How do you handle that?
You don't have to have anything in writing to have an announcement. There's nothing that says you have to, you only announce writings. You announce final actions. So in reality, you would never make an announcement there, because you, every, without disclosing any individual closed session material, normally, what you do is, you agree to the terms, and you instruct the attorneys or your parties to write it up and finalize it. Now, so it doesn't exist yet, and it could fall apart, because people don't agree on every word. Now, if you have a document, and it's signed, and the only thing awaiting is the signature of the chair, let's say, and they approve that document, you have to disclose that document.
Okay.
And I would come out and say, you know, the board approved it, and the, the general terms were X, Y, and Z, and now that document's a public record. But usually, it's not final. It's not that final when you, it's to be, it's to be finalized.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, moving on.
What's next, or in what order are we in? There you go. Now, this, I really, oops, sorry. Apologize for the boring format that I'm going to use. I, what I basically did is, I went to the, to the act and the regulations, and I pulled out material that I thought was most relevant to this body, and the Advisory Commission. So, you know, this is part of the regulations. You see CCR, that's California Code of Regulations. It was the most simplified statement of the basic rule. So I think it's a good place to start. So what the Political Reform Act primarily is governing with elected officials. But it could be other officials as well. Public official at any level of state or local government has a prohibited conflict of interest, and may not make, participate in making, or in any ways, any way, use or attempt to use his or her official position to influence a governmental decision. So that's very broad. Any act to even influence the decision. When he or she knows, or has reason to know, he or she has a disqualifying financial interest. So a public official has a disqualifying financial interest if the decision will have a reasonably foreseeable material financial effect distinguishable from the effect on the public generally, directly on the official, or his or her immediate family, or on any financial interest described in subdivision, et cetera. So the financial interests that are covered, and I put those in the bracket, a business entity, real property, a source of income, gifts, or personal finances. So if you, you cannot try to influence a decision that has a material financial impact on any of those five things, if you have a certain interest in it. And the interest levels are very low. It's like $2,000 interest in a business, for example. So if you have a business, or a real property, or a source of income, you need to be careful. So, public official, how do we, how do we pull in, for example, commissioners who are not elected? So a public official means every member of a local government agency, and a member, so, but a member does not include an individual who has no decision-making authority. But then they define the decision-making authority kind of to include things that aren't decision-making, I think. It says, a committee possesses decision-making authority whenever it makes substantive recommendations over an extended period of time, and those recommendations have been regularly approved, without significant amendment or modification by another agency. So if you're an advisory body, and your recommendations are regularly approved, then you are a decision-maker. So that's why the commission is pulled in, and, and this body. So you're covered, public officials. Now, I zeroed in on real property interests, and, because I think those are the ones of most relevance. So what is a real, an interest in real property? It includes any leasehold. And then it goes on to say, other things that I think you'd recognize as, as property. The key to me is, well, what is a leasehold interest? So, these are regulations. Leasehold, an interest in real property and leasehold interest, is used in the Government Code section I cited, shall not include the interest of a tenant in a periodic tenancy of one month or less. The import of this is, you have a month-to-month lease. You, that is not a leasehold interest that's subject to the Political Reform Act. So, you know, I know that's a matter of controversy about whether people have a month-to-month interest or a longer interest. But to, to the extent it's a month-to-month interest, and I, you know, we believe that that's what the interest is in many of these leases, you're not covered at all. At least this, any impact on your leasehold would not be a matter of concern under the Political Reform Act, because it's only a month-to-month tenancy. It's not really considered, it's not a material enough interest in real property that matter. Now, we get into, let's suppose you have a leasehold interest that is more than a month-to-month. So it's a term of years, for example. Then you have to examine, this is the materiality standard. So what is a material impact? And I didn't include subdivision A in this slide. Subdivision A is, deals with fee interests, real property interests other than leases. So B is dealing with leasehold interests. So this basically tells you, what is a material effect on a leasehold interest? And one through five is telling you what is material. Any change in the termination date of the lease? So you can't attempt to influence a decision that would change the termination date in your own lease. Any action that would increase or decrease the potential rental value of the property? So you cannot attempt to influence any decision or recommendation of a body where it would increase or decrease the potential rental value of your leasehold. Any increase or decrease the rental value of the property, and the official has the right to sublease the property. Any change in the official's actual or legal allowable use on the, on the real property? So you can't attempt to influence any change in how, how the uses are regulated of the leasehold. Or, and this is a really broad one, that would impact the official's use and enjoyment of the real property. So you cannot attempt to influence any decision that will impact the official, your use and enjoyment of real property. You know, those are, those are pretty, pretty strict. Now, the two exceptions, which are kind of self-explanatory, but the exception is a decision where you're basically repairing or replacing some infrastructure, or simply an amendment of a general plan, for example. Now, that's the materiality provision. The issue, the other issue that comes up is, there's a general rule, and this is the public generally, described as the public generally exception. And this allows for participation despite the impact on your real property, if this is, if this exists. A governmental decision's financial effect on the official's financial interest is indistinguishable from its effect on the public generally. If the official establishes that a significant segment of the public is affected, and the effect on his or her financial interest is not unique compared to the effect on the significant segment. What I'll show you later is, this is not the same as a very closely worded public generally exception that's in 1090 of the Government Code. This is different, and it's, it's stricter. The, what I didn't print here is, the regs and the, I think they're in the regs, they will tell you what is a significant segment, and those sorts of things. And the general rule is 25% of the, of the people in your jurisdiction, if 25% are affected. And you get into an argument whether it's 25% of some subset of it, for example, 25% of property owners versus everyone. But it's a, it's a very wide segment. What I put up here are there are, are specific exceptions, I guess, in special circumstances. And these are the two that I thought might be of most relevance here. So these are, these exceptions are, the effect is deemed indistinguishable from the public if either of these conditions exists. The decision affects the official's personal finances as a result of an increase or decrease to a general fee or charge. And the examples given, such as a parking rate, permit, license fee, application fee, or any general fee that applies to the entire jurisdiction. So you would certainly agree, well, I'm just, we're going to change the parking fee from $5 to $6 at the airport. It affects me, it affects everyone. Okay, that, that's accepted. Where the rubber meets the road on this one, how about rental rates? Now, it talks about license fees, and, you know, a lot of our leases are called licenses. This is a room for debate. But a general, so the question, a vote on a, on a fee that applies to the public generally, you would not be barred from making that. To me, I'd stay away from, unless I had a month-to-month lease, which then I don't care. If I had a long-term lease, and I was asked to vote on rental rates that impact my lease, I would, I would think I'd have a conflict. But that, that would be up to you to determine. The other major exception here that might apply is this number five. So the decision is made by a border commission, and the law that establishes the border commission requires certain appointees have a representative interest in a particular group. I guess that does not apply here as I read it. What, what this deals with is, there are some bodies, here's how I'd put it. I mean, I think the Retirement Association is the best example. The law requires that half the members, generally, you know, almost half the members, be employees. And they're elected by the employees, the general employees, the safety employees. They have an interest in the retirement system. But that kind of conflict doesn't disqualify you, because the law actually requires interested parties to be in the body. Now, so that's a rare, rare event. And this might apply more to the Advisory Commission. You know, a body that prefers to have people that use the airport, or have leases, or some, that is not required by law. That's something you just prefer. So there is an exception for conflicts where it's unavoidable, because the law requires people with certain interests beyond the committee. You know, I'd have to examine it further on any individual hypothetical question. But anyway, that's another major exception. Final little, two little points here. I just want to distinguish Political Reform Act from 1090. A lot of case law and some of the AG opinions arise out of 1090. There's more case law in 1090. But it is worded, it is worded differently. So Government Code 1090, and because the Political Reform Act was adopted by initiative, vote of the people, 1090 already existed. So public officials are, were, were not allowed to be financially interested in any contract made by them in their official capacity. So that's limited to the making of a contract. And you see the Political Reform Act is much broader. It bars trying to, as we said, influence any decision that would affect your financial interest. So Political Reform Act is much broader. And also, here's the distinction of the public generally language. So in Government Code 1091.5, which is, you know, dealing with the 1090 conflicts, if you're a recipient of a public service, then you can receive it on the same terms and conditions as if you were not a member of the board. In other words, again, let's say you're, the parking rates are another example of that. I mean, you're actually receiving a, I'm receiving a parking, or a campground spot, or, or something like that. And, you know, you're, you can vote on that even though you may be subject to that fee in exchange for services, but because you're a recipient of the services. Political Reform Act is different. It's a- It says, if it's reasonably foreseeable, the decision will have an effect distinguishable from its effect on the public generally, then you're barred. So you can read that and interpret it yourself. But that's the basic overview of the Political Reform Act, especially as it relates to real property interests.
Does anyone have any questions on this one? Please go ahead.
Sir, how do you handle family members?
Well, my number one rule is I go read the code. So I believe the code definitely extends to spouses, and minor children who are dependents. Beyond that, I would go have to read the code.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Now.
Next.
Now, the most fun of all. Robert's Rules of Order. Sorry, Robert's Rules of Order. Oh, here we go. I'm certainly not an expert in this. I did research it, and I've given a few presentations, and this will be very, very short. I will, I'm not a fan of Robert's Rules of Order. I have a newly revised edition, 10th edition, 704 pages long. Okay? Now, you're, I did notice your bylaw says, the chair shall be guided by Robert's Rules of Order. It was funny, the Advisory Commission, it says, may, may be guided, or something. I said, you're lucky. It's really, to me, not suitable for a small body. I could see it for a 100-person body, where, you know, it's more unwieldy, to me, that, in a nutshell. I don't think it's, but all I've done here is, I went through this sometime before, and I had like a two-page or three-page handout. What I tried to do is just summarize some of, I thought, the more important aspects to guide you. So this is, is it Rule 1? But it's dealing with small bodies. And this is where I get the idea of, it's really not, you know, needed for a five-member body. But in the book, it says, applicability of modified parliamentary rules in small boards and committees. In small boards and committees, most parliamentary rules apply, but certain modifications permitting greater flexibility and informality are commonly allowed. Quorum. Now, see, a lot of times, you actually are not going to comply with a lot of these rules, because it's overridden by your bylaws, for example. So you would follow your specific bylaws if there's a conflict. But Robert's Rules of Order says, a quorum is the number of voting members that must be present in order that business can legally be transacted. Well, that's sort of circular. You have your bylaw about how many, what a quorum is to conduct a meeting. For this type of body, you know, you got to figure out from Robert's Rules, there are different rules for different types of bodies. A quorum is a majority of all members. I think your bylaws say, you know, three out of five, but they have to be one from the city, one from the, each city, and one public member, which is a deviation from Robert's Rules. And it says, a majority means more than half, 50 plus one. So that's the, what a quorum is. Now, handling, I didn't get into voting, voting majorities and such. But handling a motion, you know, this is kind of what most people think of in Robert's Rules of Order. How are we going to control debate and motions? And it's very formal, it's very formalistic. Rule four is, a member makes a motion, another member seconds a motion, and the chair states the question, or puts the question. So those are the three basic phases to get a motion to the body for a vote. Now, do you make the motion, withdraw the motion, amend the motion, et cetera? So it will, it requires that until the chair, I'm sorry. Oh, no. So let's say, somebody makes a motion. Until the chair states the motion, in other words, puts the motion to the body, the maker may modify or withdraw the motion. Let's assume for a moment, somebody's, oh, another member seconds, somebody's seconded the motion. If the maker modifies the motion, the seconder can withdraw his second. So you make the motion, somebody seconds it, the maker, before it's put to the vote, can modify his motion, and the seconder can withdraw or renew their second. After the chair states the question, the motion becomes the property of the assembly, and the maker needs consent of the whole body to modify it or withdraw it. So once it's put to, the question's stated. Yeah.
But if, if the maker makes a motion, and then modify, and the secondant modifies the motion.
The maker modifies the motion?
Then the second can concur, right?
Can concur, yes.
Yep, so that way, you know, it stays.
Can either concur or withdraw, either one.
Withdraw, yeah. I think that's important to do.
Yeah, they can concur, definitely. And then it's just, right, as restated, then it would go forward from there.
Remanded, then the second can concur.
Yeah, yeah. You know, and that, that sort of makes sense. Here's, oh, let me see here, let me see where I am. A motion, well, to modify or withdraw a motion, until the chair, where am I? I'm sorry, I'm getting mixed up here. Oh, my, I need to go on. Okay, motions to amend. A motion to amend, the motion can be made by any member after the question is stated. If the maker of the original motion accepts the amendment, the motion as changed is then considered. So we've gone past that, where the maker hasn't amended it or anything, but now, a member of the body once makes a motion for amended. If the maker accepts it, it's then deemed amended. Note, it's not necessary to ask for another seconder, or the seconder of the original motion, if he wishes to withdraw the second or concur. The member who asked if an amendment would be voluntarily accepted now stands in as the seconder. If the original maker declines, then the original motion goes forward. And then, at that point, after the debate has ended, the chair puts the motion to a vote. Okay, that's all I really had on the making of the motion. The reason, I don't have a slide on this, but my observation is, it's hard to reconcile that formal system with the Brown Act. Because, in my mind, what happens, and I've discovered this with the districts and limited bodies that I've advised, where they really get confused. The problem is, the Brown Act itself is stating the motion on the agenda. So if you really follow Robert's Rules of Order, you don't have debate until the motion's made and seconded. There's no debate until the motion's seconded. In reality, what I've seen almost everywhere, is the debate occurs before the motion is made. And the debate springs from the agenda item that makes a recommendation. That sort of acts as the motion and seconded. Everybody's debating that. Because, you know, you do get bogged down and say, whoa, now, Robert's Rules of Order, how can we debate this when there's no motion on the floor? And I go, well, if you strictly follow Robert's Rules of Order, you could not debate the item until it's moved and seconded it. But, see, it doesn't really, that doesn't work in practice. So the debate occurs in practice, then somebody makes a motion, then you could start.